I would like to call the September 24th National Board of Education meeting to order. It is now 7:01 and we are at the Nashua High North High School in the lecture hall. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Hoensie?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver is not here. Mr. Garino is here. Ms. Porter?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Gillis is not here tonight. Other attendees, Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Ms. O'Gara?
Here.
And we have Mr. Ferencoff joining us also tonight. Mr. Mosher, you are by, is joining us by phone. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Would Mr. Garino lead us in the prayer and could Ms. O'Gara lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we start the meeting, I would like to see if somebody would make a motion to suspend the rules as we have a heavy agenda. I would like to limit each board member to speak twice to any motion or issue that's on the floor. The first time they speak, they will be limited to two minutes; the second time, one minute. Also, please wait to be recognized before you speak on any issue.
I move to suspend the rules.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
On the motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
No.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
We have two noes and...
Six.
Six yeses. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. I am, is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Ms. Porter?
I don't have anything to remove, but could we please add the September 7th focus group minutes, please?
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth, sorry, seventeenth.
Focus group?
Yes. Strategic Plan Focus Group.
What was the date on that again?
September 17th, 2018. Does that require a second?
I believe it would.
Sorry, second.
Mr. Kaufman, did you have your hand raised?
I do have my hand raised, but do you want to vote on that first?
I didn't know if it had to do with that.
Oh, no, it's a different issue related to the consent agenda.
Okay.
But just to add that one thing.
Could you do a roll call, please, Mr. Garino?
On the motion to add the Strategic Plan Focus Group meeting minutes of September 17th, 2018, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. And the consent agenda has been accepted? Excuse me, just a minute, let me say that first. So the consent agenda has been accepted?
No.
Mr. Garino?
Amended.
Amended? Okay. You have a question?
Yes, I would like to have the Curriculum Evaluation Committee meeting of September 17th pulled from the consent agenda. At that meeting, Dr. McKinney gave us a presentation and page, I believe it was 2021, were missing. I asked for that. I have it on agenda item tonight, we have not seen that. And there was no reason for those pages to be excluded. I want to know what was on them. They were in the presentation that came from the vendor. Dr. McKinney hinted that he had information on that that he didn't want to share about the specific performance of individual schools. And I would argue the board and the public have a right to know what that information is. So I ask that this not be approved, at least until we get that complete presentation. And it is an agenda item, I think it should be shown to the whole board and the public because it deals with the performance of the district against the standards. Thank you.
Ms. Raymond? Right. Sorry. Sorry, can you refresh my recollection because I don't believe those pages were presented? I thought we got a snapshot of the district as a whole and how everybody was doing. I don't recall those pages being discussed at all, other than, you know, we were looking at the information about the district as a whole, right?
May I reply?
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes. The pages were left out of the presentation that were given, and Dr. McKinney skipped over those pages when he was giving his presentation. And when I noticed they were not in the handout and they were in the, in his card deck, I asked about them and he said that it contained specific information on the performance of individual schools, and he felt that, for some reason, that he didn't want us to know what that was. I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
My understanding is he does not want to pit one school against another. I certainly understand that and appreciate that, so I am not going to support this motion. Curriculum Evaluation. Ms. Hoensie?
A point of order, anyone can pull something, it doesn't have to be seconded. If we, if we can't get it this way, I'll file a right to know because I think board members should have access to this information and I'm kind of outraged that the board doesn't get it.
Okay. Well, roll call. Dr. Mosley?
Can I just ask that Dr. McKinney just clarify?
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that. Dr. McKinney?
I believe I addressed this during the meeting. I said I would send the copy of the report to the board. I'm happy to send it to you, Madam President, and you can forward it to all the board members.
Okay. So would you like to withdraw your motion? Are you satisfied with that, Mr. Kaufman?
Honestly, I'm not. I'm sorry to say.
Okay.
It's been two weeks, it's been on the agenda twice. I asked that the actual presentation be put on this agenda so all board members could see it because I think it's valuable. And I haven't seen it in two weeks, so I would like to hold off until either we get the report or, actually, I think it should still be presented publicly. So no, I choose not to withdraw. Thank you.
So we will vote on the motion?
It's not a motion, point of order. Didn't, in the past, you ask who wants to withdraw something, you withdraw it, you vote on the rest of it?
Oh, okay.
And then you discuss it separately.
So who would like to, I guess we're looking for a motion to accept the entire consent agenda as presented on the agenda?
I'll move to accept the consent agenda with adding the September 17th focus group and without the Curriculum Evaluation Committee.
Second. Did she have the floor?
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Okay, on the motion to accept the consent agenda without the Curriculum Evaluation Committee meeting minutes, but with the focus group, Strategic Plan Focus Group minutes of September 17th. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
We have one, two, three, four noes, one, two, three, four yeses. Motion fails.
So, Mr. Garino?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to accept the consent agenda as it is with the September 17th Strategic Plan Focus Group meeting minutes.
Second. Okay. Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
No.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses and two noes. Motion carries.
Okay. Are there any communications outside the consent agenda? No, see none. Public question comment period, limited to items on this agenda, 15-minute time limit. Is there anybody who would like to speak? No. Okay. Superintendent's comments?
Good evening, everyone. So this is our second board meeting this year that we've had in September, so it's the second meeting in September. So a couple things. First thing is that I emailed the board an article in a magazine called "The District Administration." And so it's, if you're not in the educational circle, it's a very popular magazine that administrators, superintendents get, or subscribe to, excuse me, nationwide. And so one of the nice things about this is that I was actually, you know when you're on your LinkedIn account and all of a sudden I'm getting these emails from just these random people from like Maryland, Florida, "Good job Nashua," and I'm thinking, wow, I'm doing a great job, they know who I am way down in Nashua, Florida. Well, long and the short of it, they were reading the article from our CTE program and they were very impressed with the work that Amanda Bastoni and her teachers have done along with, under Donna Fitzpatrick's leadership on our programs that we are using for our ELL students. So I emailed it to the board. I'm also going to make sure that when Stacy gives, when Stacy returns tomorrow, I'm going to make sure it's on our website. I want to say again, thank you to everything that, thank you, Donna, for your leadership. Thank you, Amanda. It's just great to see that and read that, and it just shows of the wonderful work that we're doing here at the school. When I emailed the board, I also had a little bit of like a teaser or leading into today's meeting, and so I wanted to, to just give a brief update on our drones course. And I remember that when we first brought that here, it was a course that I know, Dr. Martaki, if you're watching, I hope you are watching, thank you again for supporting it, it was a pivotal vote. But I also wanted to say that we started off the program small. We had approximately 15 to 18 slots available for our drone program. We are just recently getting some numbers in in terms of the number of students that expressed an interest in the drone program. Quick conjecture?
Sixty.
Wow. You're absolutely correct, Mr. Kaufman. I'll say that publicly. You are correct. You're right. Sixty students out of 18 slots are for this drone program, which means that we're very excited. Did you cheat? Did you look at?
No, no.
Okay.
Just, no, I just, no, I'm not surprised at all.
Okay. You're right on the, you're right on the spot there. You're absolutely correct. So the good news is that there's a high interest for that. Unfortunately, we just have one program. We're excited and looking to explore our drone program at the south, so this is just great. And again, I want to thank Amanda Bastoni and Assistant Superintendent Donna Fitzpatrick for their work on that. In your packets, you'll see enrollment numbers. Please consider those numbers fluid. Nothing is going to be settled, set in stone until after the October 1st count, but as you can see that our enrollment is, you know, continues to stay about the same, but at the same time that there are, we're accepting students coming into the district and there's also students that are coming or leaving our district too. On September 18th, we had our first principal district-wide monthly meeting. We switched it up a little bit because we've done some work around social-emotional growth of our students and our kids. And so this is a book that we're doing, a district-wide read and, and book study and really coming back to our faculty. It's called Social Emotional Learning in the Classroom: Practical Guide for Integrating All Social-Emotional Skills Into Instruction and Classroom Management. I want to thank Dr. McKinney for his work with this. This last meeting, we actually broke up into some small groups, did some study. We really discussed about the components of social-emotional, integrating that into our instruction, integrating to, into our routines, integrating that concept into our practice as educators and practitioners. So we're going to continue to do some more work on that. Thank you, Dr. McKinney, on that. September 13th was a day that all, some of us were there. We kicked off our strategic plan. It was well-attended. It's nice, if you haven't seen it, someone told me that it was on YouTube, but it's certainly on our local cable television. We're very, very excited that we're moving forward with this. We actually had our, one of our first meetings already where I actually did, worked with a focus group at our district-wide office. We actually conducted another focus group at Amherst Street today. So we're well underway of getting that data and gathering that data for our, our, our plan. This September 26th will be the first time that our steering committee is going to meet, and we're going to, again, reiterate the components of our strategic plan, but also really talk about what the steering committee function as, as a sounding board, as an opportunity for myself and the co-chair, Susan Porter, to bounce some ideas off, to, you know, always keep us, what I say, on track and on balance. Again, please understand I'm talking to the general public. We are coming to you. We are going to get your feedback on the strategic plan. We're looking forward to getting as much input as you can possibly imagine. Myself, Susan Porter, Stacy Hines, we're also creating a survey, so if you don't get to our focus groups or anything like that, you can certainly take a survey to participate and give us some feedback. Just more point of FYI, our director's contract was approved last week. Thank you to the board for that, I really appreciate it. I just, this contract is a little bit, it's not a four-year deal, it's a two-year retroactive contract. So just to kind of get, keep the public abreast in what's going on here, this contract was retroactive for 2017. It's a two-year deal, so it's a 2017, 2018 year and 18, 19 year. The reason why I'm sharing that with you now is because we're going to be back at the table with this particular bargaining unit probably within the next two to three months to renegotiate a contract, to negotiate a contract that is a little bit, that will extend that time. But again, I wanted to thank the, the board, I want to thank the directors, Attorney Clausen, Board Member Timmons, trying to think of anybody else, Ms. O'Gara, that were part of that negotiations. That's basically it. We're off and running, and believe it or not, I'm actually going to say that it's nice to feel the cool here today. Thank you.
Board members' comments to the superintendent's. I'll start with Ms. Timmons.
No comment.
Sure. I went to the Strategic Plan kickoff. I thought it was lovely. And I got a note home in my children's folders on Friday inviting all the parents from my school to come to the first, oh, the first parent focus group at that elementary school in October. So I'm pretty excited about that, and I hope a lot of parents are able to go. But if not, I assume you are accepting feedback, you know, through email or some other way. So, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Just sort of a follow-up to Ms. Raymond. Can, just, Dr. Mosley, can you set up what they call an email alias so people can email directly to the Strategic Planning Committee? In other words, this way the public can send an email that would go to all the members of the committee?
What am I emailing them exactly?
You're not sending them anything. What it is, an email alias is a list of people, it's a distribution list, just like the BOE list or principals list that you use. It's just a list of people who get an email. You send it to that list and a person could send an email to that one, you know, Strategic Planning Committee email address, and that would go to everybody on the committee, and then you wouldn't have to forward it to anybody, it would already be there. So it's kind of the way the BOE list works currently. Member of the public sends it to the BOE, everybody gets it at the same time. I'm sure Mr. Ferencoff knows what I'm talking about and might be able to help set that up. It's pretty straightforward.
Thank, if I can just, maybe we can talk offline, we can clarify a little bit about an email list that's going directly to me or the email list that's going to the two chairs, is that how that working?
So it would be the two chairs and the whatever 13, 15, 18 people that are on the steering committee. It would just be to those people, the people on the steering committee. Be a way for the public to communicate with them. That's the intent. And also, at our last meeting, we spoke about the Strategic Planning Committee meetings being recorded by audio, and there was a request by Ms. Van Twyver to make those audio recordings available on the website. I looked for them, I couldn't find them. Is that a work in progress or?
Legally, we, all we need to do is to provide the notes of the meeting, and that's what we've decided, that's what we've done, and you see them in the packet.
Who is "we"? I mean, I would ask that if we have an audio recording, Ms. Van Twyver asked, I would ask that the board be able to, if we have to vote, I'm happy to move and ask, well, I can't do it in this moment, but move and ask that the audio recordings of the minutes be published. There's no reason for them not to be, just like we have video. And I can see it'd be nearly impossible to get the videographers to all the meetings you have scheduled, but if audio recording is an option, we have a portable device and you are recording the meetings, why wouldn't you make those available to the public?
Ms. Porter?
I think if you look at the, the copy of the minutes that's in your notes, pretty much there's the same, every, every focus group has the same format, there's the same questions. It's, what it is, is it's just people in a room talking and they're putting, if you look on your packet where it says, for example, on the first page, "Strengths," these are the, these are all of the comments that have been tabulated that people put up on the, there's posters all around the room and people go with their Post-its and they put their comments up there. So basically, if you look at the top here, which is talking about strengths, weaknesses, priorities, those are all the posters that are all around the room. And then if you look down here, the way that this has been tabulated, those are all of the Post-its. So there's really nothing on the audio that's not on this paper.
And if I could just say?
And it's just a conversational group of people. So, I mean, you could be hearing, the presenter would be talking and just explaining what's going on, but there's really, there's, there's really nothing else that's not here.
Dr. Mosley, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of compliment, kind of add to what Susan Porter just shared. It's like when we are, even when we have an audio there, you have people moving around the room that are just having these conversations, so there's not a lot of audio there. You can hear me speaking, certainly, but you can't really hear a lot of the participants speaking because they're in small groups as they make their way through the charts of priorities, strengths, opportunities, and, and challenges or weaknesses. So that's why the audio is a little challenging. That's why we provided the notes. But we're, we, unless the board wants to, I mean, we can have a secretary there, but that's going to cost some money, and I don't think that's prudent to be spending that much time and resources on secretaries to record individual group conversation. That's a lot of work.
Mr. Kaufman, this is your second time speaking to this issue, so could you hold it to one minute, please?
Sure. So the issue is the previous meeting minutes, which I believe Ms. Porter mentioned that last meeting they were going to, you said they were audio-recorded, then you were going to produce notes for them. So what I see is an outline, I don't see notes, and it was those meetings that Ms. Van Twyver had requested be posted on the website. I understand the focus groups, you're going to have to tally all this data, and if you're going to consistently give us what you gave us, that's probably okay, but I was referring to what had been promised previously to us, that those two or three or four meetings already held that were recorded, that were not focus groups, would, the notes would be upgraded, which you said you were going to do, and Ms. Van Twyver had asked you to consider putting the audio files, and that's where, that was where I was primarily concerned.
Ms. Porter?
Is posting those recordings something that requires a vote of the board?
Whether we post them or not?
Whether they're posted online, the recordings are there and the minutes are there and more detail is being added, but, and I think that we're covered legally. I mean, if we want above and beyond that, is that something that we need to vote on as a board?
I would think so, yes. Mr. Garino?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that the, that the board should vote on these things that Mr. Kaufman is asking as far as an alias goes, adding extra, you know, saying, "Dr. Mosley, you should do this, you should do that." We have to act as a board together, and we have to agree upon it. We already have, we already have a good system in place, I think, and I think we have to vote for it as a board, whether we want to post more, more meeting minutes like that from the recordings. And also, as far as anybody getting in touch with the, with the committee, the Strategic Planning Committee, and, and setting up this alias so that everybody gets the emails, I don't think that's necessary. I think Ms. Porter's, the representative on the board, everybody knows her email, they can go right online, they know she's on the strategic plan. Anyone from the public can just go email Ms. Porter and it could go, you know, for the strategic plan, or they could just email the board. So I don't think, if we, you know, we have to get the whole board together, acting as a team, making these decisions. It's not one or two, not one or two board members directing people to do things.
Dr. Mosley?
This is a very, this is a prodigious undertaking, and we're in the midst of this right now, and I just ask that we, people's time and what they're doing can really factor into adding another thing to this, another situation, and we really want to, we've been transparent, sorry. We've been transparent as possible with this process, and so certainly, if, if it changes, then we have to go back and, and, you know, memorialize those changes to documents we've already sent out and we've already highlighted for the public.
Anybody else? Pardon?
Still doing comments.
Yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you. I wanted to know about the social-emotional learning. You gave us a title of a book, but this board as a whole has never had a presentation on it. Generally, the board approves curriculum. If you were including this in the curriculum, I think it would be nice that the board would be apprised of it upfront. And I think we've asked before, so, and I think parents would like to, if this is something new, I mean, it should come to the board, the board should give its okay, and then we should continue with the implementation. It shouldn't be implemented before we even know what it is. So I would ask you again to respectfully consider that the board needs to have a presentation on this. I mean, whether it's, send us a bunch of articles, something, what are you doing in the classrooms? We should know. If parents ask us, we should know what it is. I know it's a trend, but that doesn't mean that we understand exactly what it is. You have professional development, you're learning what it is. I think that you should respect the board and present it to the board what you're planning on. and implementing. And that's what I would ask.
Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I did watch, I did not attend the strategic plan kickoff, but I did watch videotape and I think it's, it was well-attended and looks like it's off to a good start. I also got the invitation for parents for Nashville High South, which is in October. So, I'm planning on attending that. And I want to say job well done to our CTE director, as well as her staff and teachers for reaching out to ELL students. This public schools, public school is about equal opportunity for all. And I think that's, that, to me, that tells me that we are, we are carrying out our mission as, in public schools. So, I want to say job well done.
Okay. I would like to say I attended the strategic planning kickoff and I thought it was very well-attended. I did hear from a teacher that said they didn't know that it, they were having the kickoff, but it is in iNews. So, if teachers are concerned about what's going on, they should be able to read iNews and see what's going on. Congratulations to the CTE program. That program is just doing so well. And I'm happy for the people that are doing the work and I'm real happy for our kids. I think it's a positive step. As far as the socio-emotional learning, I think it's a step in the right direction and I would hope that it would be taken up at the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee. Okay. Committee on the Budget, we had no budget meeting. Committee on Finance and Operations, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President.
Point of order. I apologize, you skipped student comment.
Oh, I am so, thank you, thank you. I am so sorry. Ms. Sweeney.
Thank you. So, this week is Battle of the Bridge Week for both North and South, which is when our sports teams play against each other. I can't speak for North, but I know that South, we are doing Spirit Week for, during school for all the days. Today was more weekend Monday, so you wear pajamas and sweatpants. Tomorrow is Tourist Tuesday. Tomorrow will also be the Bonfire at South, I believe at 6:00 PM, weather permitting, which is not looking that good right now. That kind of kicks off Battle of the Bridge for us. And then, of course, the big football game is on Friday at Stelo Stadium at 6:30 PM. Tickets are being sold beforehand and at the door.
Well, thank you, thank you. And I apologize.
Committee on Finance and Operations, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance and Operations has one item, and that's the Fiscal Year 2019 August Transfer Report. The report is included in the handout. It is self-explanatory. And also, Mr. Donovan went over it at the committee level, so I'm not going to have him go over it piece by piece. But if anybody has any questions, I'm sure he, as always, he's there to answer questions. So, with that, I am going to move to approve the Fiscal Year 2019 August Transfer Report.
Second.
You ready for the vote?
Yes.
On the motion to approve the Fiscal Year 2019 August Transfer Report, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Do you know when your next meeting is?
Our next meeting is, I'm not sure.
Sometime in October.
October, yes.
Okay, thanks. Committee on Policy, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, Mrs. Oden. We had a very busy meeting, again, last month with a number of policies that we have worked on. I'm continuing to focus on things where we need to change to comply legally or to get things updated because they are out of date. So, the first item is I'd like to move to accept the changes to Policy EFDA, Student Meal Charges.
Second.
Thank you. This simply brings us into compliance with what the state is asking us to do regarding overdue meals, meal accounts. So, the important things to note is that parents will be notified when their student's account goes negative and then by mail if they're two weeks in arrears. And then, at the end of June, the delinquent debt becomes bad debt.
Mr. Kaufman.
Absolutely in support of moving this forward, but a question just came to me. Could this prevent a student from graduating if they have an outstanding debt? No? For those of you, Mr. Donovan's shaking his head no, so thank you. I was just curious. But there are student fees if they don't pay that will prevent them from graduating, just not?
I believe so at high school, yes.
Thank you.
But not, not for food, not lunch.
Okay.
Are you ready for the roll call?
Ready for the roll call.
Okay. On the motion to approve Policy EFDA, Student Meal Charges as amended, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the prohibition on aiding or abetting sexual abuse. Having consulted with TARA, it looks like the letter should be GBEAA. I'm going to withdraw this one at this time. During our policy meeting, we had a discussion about me running this by Corporation Counsel. And when I did that, they asked to take a look at it and do some tweaking to clarify the language. So, at this point, I'm waiting for information back from Corporation Counsel before we move forward. And then, just as a matter of procedure, I believe I may have been mistaken to only have this in policy. It either needs to go typically with policies about staff, they typically go to HR and then policy, or policy and then HR. So, either way, we may have been premature sending it to the full board. So, that's where we are on that right now. So, the next item on the agenda is Policy JCA, Change of School or Assignment. During a recent main board meeting, I think it was the end of August, we had a discussion about a student that needed to transfer to a different school district and we discovered that our policy was out of date with some legislative changes. So, you'll notice in red here, these are changes because now it is the Board of Education that must vote on transfer students, not superintendents talking to each other. So, I move to accept Policy JCA, Change of School or Assignment as amended.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
On the motion to approve Policy JCA, Change of School or Assignment as amended, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item is Policy JFAB, Admission of Tuition and Non-Resident Students. I move that we accept this policy as amended.
Second.
And just to speak to it, the language changes are the same as the prior regarding students coming and going. It is the Board of Education that has the authority to make these decisions, not superintendents. So, we've updated the language to reflect that.
Questions or comments? I have a question. It was asked at the meeting, and Mr. Donovan might know, if a teacher from Nashua decides to bring their child into the district if they're, they live in another community, what is the cost of that?
Typically, it's 50% of the average cost of student defined by the DOE report.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Looking for a vote?
You ready for the roll, Madam President? Okay. On the motion to approve Policy JFAB, Admission of Tuition and Non-Resident Students as amended, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. I move, sorry, I move that we accept the changes to Policy JBAA-R, which is our Sexual Discrimination, Sexual Harassment, and Sexual Violence for Students appendix.
Second.
Thank you. In this particular policy, this is a list of our Title IX coordinators for each school. We've simply updated it with the names of the current Title IX coordinators, which, if anybody notices, is the principal of each school. So, it has everyone's correct names and contact information.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. And our next meeting will be on October 16th. It's a Tuesday at 6:00 PM and I haven't finalized the agenda yet.
Okay, thank you. Curriculum, Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Ms. Van Twyver is not here. Who's on that committee? Anybody? Do you have any capsule of, little summary of what went on there? Do you remember? I know I'm putting you on the spot.
I don't have my notes with me.
Okay. Dr. McKinney, might you help us out a little bit? Thank you.
During that meeting, we discussed the professional development plans for the year.
That's right. I was there, I remember.
That's right.
Thank you. And you did a real good job. Thanks. Committee on Human Resources.
So, I move to suspend the rules as the HR committee met today at 5:30. Do we need to vote on that or? Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, so, we had a great meeting and I would like to move to accept Tanya Ackerman as Assistant Principal of Bicentennial Elementary School for the 2018-2019 school year at an annual salary of $73,500.
Second.
You ready for the?
Ready for the roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, I'd also like to move to accept the personnel recommendations dated September 24th, 2018.
Second.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Point of order, Ms. Oden.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'd like to request a non-public session under 91A32C, matters which, if discussed in public, likely would affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the BOE unless such person requests an open meeting. It'll be brief.
Second.
Isn't this something that could wait?
Well, I don't, we need to have the whole board together. It's an HR matter, so I thought I'd bring it up since we were all here. Because we couldn't do it in the committee, because not everybody would be there.
Well, I'd like to wait. We don't have that many people here, but there are people from the public and there are people watching, so I don't see any harm of having this after our meeting.
Fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Liaison reports. Anybody up there? Okay. Unfinished business, School Funding 101 Forum. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Andrew Valinsky and another gentleman whose name is escaping me right now have been kind of touring the state, presenting an education funding forum. They've gone to a number of other communities, including Manchester, Derry, Berlin, Keene, a couple out on the seacoast. And basically, their presentation is about an hour, hour and a half, where they present to the community an explanation of how education funding is calculated here in New Hampshire. This is not political in any way, it is merely a way for the public to understand how our tax money turns into education funding dollars. And I would very much like to invite them here to present in Nashua so that I can learn and anybody else in the community who's interested can learn how this process works. Especially with, I feel like our funding is always a source of tension and I'd like to get a little bit more information and I'm sure the public would as well before our next budget season.
Ms. Hoensie. Would this be possible on videotape? Did they videotape any of the other presentations?
There are videotapes of the other presentations and there are articles in a number of the other local papers around, but part of the, part of the presentation involves the public being able to ask questions at the end. So, I think that there's a benefit in actually inviting them physically to be here so that people can ask questions and have them answered.
Did you not tell me that when they were in Berlin that 140 people showed up? Was that in Berlin?
It was either Berlin or Conway. I forget which one. But yeah, so far, all of the news articles I've read about them, they've been very well-attended. So, I don't know if this room would be big enough. But before reaching out, I felt it would be prudent to ask the board and also ask the superintendent if people are okay with using one of our facilities to host a forum like this.
Yes, it's fine. I guess my, I'm sorry, was I?
No, go right ahead.
I think it's, the more information we get out there around the funding sources and how that translates into our schools, I think that's most appropriate. I guess we'd have to work kind of offline in terms of advertising and then get some sense of the capacity we're anticipating. Sometimes people say that they're going to show up and then they don't, or sometimes they say they're not going to show up and they do. So, we want to make sure that we can get as many, we can advertise that and get some numbers and get people in. So, I guess my question back to you, Heather, is that do you anticipate just one meeting or just several? Because it could be at one side of the city, it could be at another side. So, just kind of, you have to make a decision now, but just kind of think about that for a little bit.
Thank you. I know in Manchester it was one, one presentation. And I think that's the district that's closest to us in size. I have not reached out to either gentleman myself. I thought it was best, I mean, I have the contact information, but I thought it was best to bring it here before doing so, because if there wasn't support for it, I didn't want to waste anybody's time. But there is, if there is, I'm happy to take on the role of reaching out and working with them and your office to try and schedule something that makes sense for the district. I know we have a lot of other activities in the evenings in our schools, so it might[1787.98] so there might take some doing to schedule it.
Mr. Kaufman?
I think it's a great idea. I think if you have, if you think you're going to overrun this room, just book it for the auditorium. We have, between the two high schools, you might find a date.
So would you like to make a motion, Ms. Raymond?
Yes, I'd like to move to invite Mr. Valinsky, his partner, to come down to Nashua and host an Education 101 funding forum.
So moved.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
I think it's a good idea, and yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. The next issue, under unfinished business, including the text of Board of Ed correspondence into the public record as part of the consent agenda approval process. And that's by Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thanks. So right now, as part of our typical process is, the consent agenda includes a list of the correspondence that the board receives, or even between itself, and the subject matter of that particular email. But for some reason, we don't actually include the text of the email in the public record. So I'm trying to overcome what I perceive to be a defect in our ability to communicate to the public everything that we do, which the emails are public by nature of coming to us. That's an established fact of law. So they are already in the public domain. I'm just asking that they be made public as part of our normal process. To that end, I would like to move to include the text of BOE public correspondence on the consent agenda and included in the minutes of our meetings.
Second. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I'm curious if anyone knows what other districts have as far as a practice regarding this.
No one? Okay.
I just think my question is, this is certainly an amount of time that's going to take away, again, from our faculty in terms of preparation, and I'm curious to know if there was a factor of time and resources that are going to be devoted to now this another layer of getting the board packet together. So I'm just, if that's where we're going, then there's probably going to be some type of financial components to it, because I just don't think I could have my faculty add yet another layer to this already pretty arduous task of putting together this board packet. So I'd have to get back to the board in terms of, if this goes through, then I think there's another caveat to this around the time it's going to take for our faculty to get this request completed. I just don't have that in front of me right now, but certainly that has to be taken into consideration.
Mr. Greeno, then Ms. Hohensie.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to support this motion, mostly because of what Dr. Mosley said, which means extra man-hours. I don't think we have thought this out as far as how many extra man-hours this is going to cost. There's going to be a lot of paperwork, a lot of paper that has to be included. And right now, anything in our consent agenda, the text of correspondence, is available, and it's readily available, and they can just pull it out and photocopy it. So I don't think this is a good idea, and I think we've talked about this before at our meetings, and I think we've, I'm not sure if we voted it down, but I think we have. I could be wrong, but I'm not going to support this.
Ms. Hohensie? Thank you. I don't see this as a time-consuming task, because it's under consent. We don't get the minutes sent out. It's not in our packet. So what we get is a communication file, just the list, the summary. All of the emails come in, in digital format, so it's not like there's going to be a big transcription. You just have the summary at the top, and you attach the emails to the bottom. So it would just be posted online so the board and the public can have access. Right now, we get that list individually with just the summary. But we could just get a link. I mean, it's not like we're going to get paper. We don't get paper now. We don't have to get paper going forward. I think this is just transparency. And I also think if every board member and everybody knew that their emails are going to be public, they might be more civil. They might be less lengthy. They might be more concise. It could have a beneficial effect. Anybody else? Mr. Kaufman, this is your second time?
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Gore, you know where it's available online, the text of the emails, because to the best of my knowledge, they are not available. And just to Ms. Hohensie's point, there's no need to print anything. We don't get them printed now. We don't ask for them to be printed. It would be an electronic record in its native form. So I think for the sake of transparency, the public ought to know what's in our emails. The public right-to-know law says that our correspondence is public, but currently, the public has no way to see that correspondence. This is intended to fix that. Thank you.
Mr. Greeno?
Did I answer the question?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't actually say that they were available online. They're available, they can request, they can see it, and they can request it, and they get a copy of it. That's what I was referring to. I never said that they were actually available online already.
If nobody else, I'd like to speak to this. First, the Board of Aldermen do not accept and place-on-file email communications that go to theboardofaldermen@nashua.gov, address unless specifically requested by the Board President. The emails are public when a majority receives it to the Board of Ed. Anybody can ask, you know, for, to see any of those. And the board has never, never published those or had them listed online. And I don't think it's wise to start that at this point, so I will not accept, support this. Ready for a vote?
You ready for the vote? On the motion to include the text of BOE correspondence as part of the consent agenda approval process and approved in minutes of meeting, Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
We have six noes and two yeses. The motion fails.
Okay. The next item on unfinished business is School District Annual Report per Policy 11211 from Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, do you want to speak to your request?
Yes, thank you. So we have an existing policy on file, I'm sorry, I don't have it with me today, which says in, essentially in October, there will be an annual report given to the board and the public. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that if they weren't, and ask that the administration prepare an annual report to be given sometime in October. And I'll be happy, do I need to make a motion to make that happen?
Can I speak to it first?
I don't mind, but I mean procedurally, if you're going to speak to something, it should be a motion, so.
Well, speaking, I do remember when we once had something like that. I had spoken to a former board member who said it varied from year to year. It often was a trifold. Sometimes it was a little bit larger. Ms. Kinsella thinks that it has been, that policy that provided for that has been rescinded, and she didn't have time, because she's been working on her own a lot, and then training a new person, that she hadn't had time to go through the minutes. But she hasn't seen one since 2013. And what I was told, that it varied from year to year, it was often a trifold. Sometimes it had school board members and their BIOS. Sometimes it had committee assignments of board members, the school calendar, enrollment in the budget, schools with the principals' names and phone numbers, the awards, if a teacher got an award. Or sometimes it had athletic events or honors that athletic teams had won. But when you look at this, I think a lot of it's on the website now, and that's probably why it was rescinded. So, Mr.?
It's currently on the website. It has, it's there. It doesn't say it's rescinded. It is a best practice. It's recommended by the School Board Association. And the policy on file has a list of the things that would be presented, and they weren't principal names or high school achievements for athletics. They dealt with budgetary things, that reviewed initiatives and curriculum and other things. So I would encourage, if you want to bring it back next month, we'll have a copy of it. We can certainly review and decide then. I have no problem with that, Mrs. Oden.
I will say that I saw some of them, and what I said is exactly what was on some of those, so.
I'm speaking about what's in the policy.
I'm not making up what was there.
No, not disputing that, but what I'm saying is the policy is what I'm referring to. I don't have the benefit of what you've seen.
And we will look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, I'm sorry, Mr. Mosher?
Yes. You know, in 12 years, School District Annual Report, I think I've seen two, three. And it was basically very trivial material, and like you said, sometimes it was about an award that was given, or some athletic prowess, or some invention that one of the, or a group of the kids in the science class made up. And it really didn't matter. And I think that Policy 11211, I believe that that is a dead issue. And I don't think that we should even bother with it, because like you say, if most of this material is available online, we can just, you know, do a search, a quick search. And if it is not currently in the book, it'll be it. But I think it's a waste of time to start fishing on that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mosley.
Mr. Mosher?
Mosher. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I'm aware of this policy, because one of the things that I took a lot of time to do was to go through our policies on the website and bring up any that were numbered, because I've noticed that the numbered ones tend to be ones that are more than 10 years old and that haven't really been in play in typically about that much time. So I started looking into this one several months ago, as I've been looking into all of them. And as anybody who comes to my policy committee meetings knows, we're kind of going chronologically. And so this one is all the way back in the K's, and we are on like B and C right now. So we're just not there. But when I first brought it up for Ms. Kinsella to look up for me, she had said the same thing, that she thought it was rescinded around the time that we started using the website more extensively to report all of this stuff. And she, unfortunately, our minutes and motions only go back on the website like five years. So she actually has to like pull boxes to find out when and if it was rescinded. I don't think that historically, we've done a very good job of tracking stuff in our old policies. So I'm working on it. But just so everybody knows, the policy says, one, the superintendent of schools shall prepare an annual report of school operations for the previous school year. The reports shall be for general distribution. The reports shall include statistical and pertinent statistical and financial data, previous year's accomplishments, and planned programs for the ensuing year, and shall be available for distribution in early fall of each year. And then it says, "Distribution shall be made to the Board of Ed, the Mayor, the Board of Aldermen, school admin, parent-teacher groups, major industrial organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, and interested citizen groups and individuals." This reminds me very much of our policy that we rescinded earlier this year, about the minutes, where there was an old policy from like the 90s, where we said we were distributing our minutes to all of these places. And when the website came into use, now they're posted there for people to get them. So I imagine that that's what happened with this one as well. You know, at this point, I'm sure the policy committee would like to talk about it, but my recommendation is that we rescind it once we determine that all of this information is on the website. And I think it is, for the most part. But if there's stuff that isn't, then perhaps a solution would be to make sure that that information goes on the website, and then we would be meeting, like killing two birds with one stone.
Okay, so I think we would refer this to the policy committee. Okay. The next item is the list review, including handout from Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, thank you. So the list is this yellow-blue thing. They didn't include it in this packet. It was in our previous packet. The last time we had a meeting, we had a special meeting of the board to go through it. The last time we looked at it was sometime in April. There are still things on this list. You know, it was intended as a way to capture requests that would be reviewed and acted upon, but five months, the last entry is 6/11. I don't even remember. You know, we haven't kept current with this, and I think if we're going to use it, we should use it as a tool. There was a time in our board meetings where this list was part of the basic agenda, and it was looked at every week, or every two weeks when we met, and a decision was made what we were going to do with it. And all of a sudden, it disappeared now for five or six months at a time. So I would ask that this list find life again, and that it be used as a management tool for exactly what it is, to keep track of board member requests. And the board, I guess, voted to collect this list and then vote on each one of these things to send it over to the superintendent for action. Yet that has not occurred in five months. So, Mrs. Oden, I just wanted to bring the issue forward. I asked that you, and in fact, if I recall correctly, in June, you said you would have held, you were going to held a meeting in July to review this. That never happened.
Right.
And nothing has happened since. So I ask if you could schedule another separate meeting, a working group, if you would, to complete working on this list and be clear about, you know, how we're going to use this going forward.
Okay, and I went through this. A lot of these issues have been addressed. They have a date provided with them. I think, I think several of them have been answered. So before it's sent out again, hopefully, it will be updated, and there will be fewer items to deal with. And we will set up, if it's the will of the board, set up a work session to deal with some of these that are pertinent.
Do you want to take a vote now to see if the board wants to meet on it?
Okay.
Because, I mean, the will of the board, you know, that's great. But in reality, individual member requests really do need to be looked at and fulfilled. And I get we're majority rule, but that's not how the board was run before you were chair. Generally speaking, when a member had a request, it was fulfilled. So I made my request for a special meeting. So do you want me to put that into a motion?
You can.
Okay. Motion to convene a special Board of Ed meeting to review the list that we all know and love.
Second. Ms. Raymond, you had your hand up?
Thank you. You know, I agree that it's not a good habit that if a board member needs some information for them not to get it. I don't think that's, I don't think that's an appropriate, like, non-response. I don't appreciate that happening. However, I don't, and I think we've had this conversation before, I don't think that individual board members ought to have the authority to issue directives on their own without the backing of the board. So, you know, it's weighing those two things. So, you know, it's weighing those two things. But I certainly think if a board member asks for some information that's easy to get, there's no reason why they shouldn't get it in a reasonable amount of time. My question is, I don't have the list in front of me. I apologize. I left my last week's packet at home. How many items are outstanding on the list? Is it something that we need a whole meeting to kind of go through and parse? And the other question I have is, have we gotten better about asking for information versus issuing directives as part of the list? Because directives really ought to be like an agenda item.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And I agree that some requests by individuals that can be easily, you know, questions or things like that, but some of the things on the list, I think, are over the top. And we have to be very careful about what we ask for, because we, I think there's a lot of things on this list where it hasn't been thought out, the impact on the efficiency, or the impact on the cost to administration. And I mean, one of the things that I know that's on this list is that one of the board members is asking for the credentials or something of all, every single employee in the district. It seems over the top. And I don't know what that would be for, or how long it would take an individual just to put them together, and then another individual just to go through them. And I don't understand the motive behind it, whether it's, some of them seem inappropriate. So, it's, I think we have to be very careful about our requests. And I agree with Ms. Raymond that, you know, individuals can't be directing their, you know, giving directions as individuals of the board. We have to act together, and we have to work together as a team. So, we have to think about this list and think about our requests, really. We have to think them through before we, before we just, you know, make commands and demands of administration.
Mrs. Oden, may I?
Mr. Kaufman?
There's one thing on here that's a NEASK update, asking for the reports and the surveys. Just last week, Mr. Guarino commented he thought the NEASK reports should be reviewed, both of them. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It was a climate survey. We haven't gotten to, North is in December. My mistake. It was a climate survey, my confusion. You know, you guys need to look at this. And I would ask that the board take a consistent look at it. Thank you, Ms. Raymond, for trying to explain the balance that we have to deal with. But my questions are legitimate questions. This is my due diligence that I perform as part of my role. The fact that you have no questions means you have no questions. That could be because maybe you're not on the board and have some insight into areas that I have and I'm asking about. Here's one. Conduct a student survey. This is on tonight's agenda. This was back in February. Conduct a student survey to identify home computer resources and connectivity. The previous board had asked the administration to do that. We were told it was going to happen in the fall during registration timeframe. They couldn't do it in, you know, toward the end of the year. So, that's something that should have been done already, and that, you know, so there are things here that are current. Granted, there may be some things that are, that have come and gone.
Sorry, Mr. Kaufman, your time's up.
Time's fine. Call the question.
I'm ready to say something.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes, thank you. You know, I noticed in reviewing that list that three items on that list were from, from Maris Van Twyber, and 35 of them were from another member.
From me. I asked them. It's okay to say it.
I'm sorry. Please do not speak out. Thank you.
Yes, that's not necessary to do that. I didn't mention your name either. But there's 35 by another member. And some of these things require a lot of work on the part of administration. And I think that Mrs., which she spoke before, that we have to work more together, and we have to evaluate what is absolutely necessary, and what is the motive behind some of these requests.
Motive.
And if we are working on this and to review these things, and especially as a requester, you should review it yourself, and what is your motive for getting these things? Why, why is it necessary? You know, we have to look at the necessity of some of these requests and see, why, why are we making it? Is it just something, you know, that we can put into our own notebook? Or is it something that's pertinent to the operation of the board? If it's not, after looking at it again and seeing what it is that we're asking for, you know, maybe we should just forget about it. But there's so many things in there, and so many things that require so much work, that we would have to put something in particular, somebody be hired to handle all these things.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, we will go over the list. We will continue on this, because the next request by Mr. Kaufman is something that was on the list, and I'm going to ask Dr. Mosley to speak to it. It's the results of the Student Home Computer Access Equipment Survey previously requested by the board. So, could you address that, Dr. Mosley?
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
When someone asks to call the question, it's usually not debatable.
I believe you're correct, Ms. Hohency, but he asked if he ought to make a motion, but didn't actually make the motion.
Yes, I seconded.
Oh, I did not hear that. I apologize.
That's okay. We do have a motion on the floor to convene special Board of Education meeting to review the list we all know and love. Motion by Mr. Kaufman, seconded by Ms. Hohency.
Okay, call the motion.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Porter? We have one, two, three, four, five noes, and one, two, three yeses. Motion fails.
I'm sorry. I jumped the gun here, but the results of the Student Home Computer Access Equipment Survey previously requested by the board, and that is on the information log request. So, Dr. Mosley, could you please speak to that?
I can speak to that. Right now, we have that information going out to our parents, where they would indicate it's through a quick, it's not a survey. It's just kind of a checkbox. So, as I said at the beginning of the year, that once we get the October 1st count, and we get a steady number on our enrollment, we'll certainly will indicate, we'll certainly give you the result of the submission of parents who completed that form back to the board. Please keep in mind that this is a form that's either, and I will bring it to the board so we understand what I'm talking about, but it's just a form that indicates whether or not students have access or have accessibility to a computer at home.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Kaufman?
Looking forward to getting the results of the survey.
Thank you.
Can I?
Dr. Mosley?
Again, a survey is where you have some choices. You have some general information. This is just strictly just one, it's a question. It's not just a survey. So, I just want to be very clear to the board and to the public what that entails.
Okay. Next issue under unfinished business, Dr. McKinney to give curriculum I-ready presentation, including the omitted pages to the full board. Mr. Kaufman?
We sort of touched on this earlier. Dr. McKinney said he was going to send it to the board. I still ask that that be put on a future board agenda in the, you know, how we have in the early part of our agenda, time for a presentation. I think it would be valuable for the whole board to see that, as well as the public, including the pages that were not distributed. We need to see the whole thing. Thank you.
As somebody who was sick and was not able to attend that meeting, I did watch that, that meeting, and I just think it would be a waste of time for board members to have that presentation again. That's redundant. If anybody wants to watch it, they certainly can watch it. And he said he would send out the material to us, so I don't see a need for that. But if you want to make a motion, you certainly can.
I'm anxiously, if I may. May I speak? So, I'll anxiously await receipt of the presentation and its missing pages. Thank you.
The next item, update on implementing play-based learning in kindergarten as required by state law. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So, there was a change instituted into the law from the legislature indicating that play-based learning is now to be implemented in kindergarten. And I was just curious to get an update on what the district has done to comply with that new law.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I too am curious about this matter. And I recall, we discussed it at the last curriculum meeting, because I forget the exact date in August that the law took effect, but it was something like two weeks before school started. And so, I had asked Dr. McKinney, and I know others were curious about how can we, you know, affect a curriculum change in two weeks? Because ordinarily, it would take, you know, a couple of years to affect a curriculum change. And my understanding from Dr. McKinney is that he, you had some training on it, and then you were going to give us an update in October or November, depending on how you and Ms. Van Twyber arranged the agendas?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that should be an issue that gets sent to curriculum and evaluation. Okay. The next one, I'm not sure what it is. Update on transportation for the new school year. That's by Mr. Kaufman. Dr. Mosley, would you like to speak to that? Is there any, are we having problems with buses, or? I don't know exactly what you were looking for, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. So, my recollection from previous years on the board is that the early part of school always presents real challenges around the bus service. So, I just was trying to get a handle of where we were now. I guess we're two weeks after, so now we are. We've got a month of school already. Everything is stable. The routes are pretty well finalized. We don't, we're not leaving kids on the curb. I'm just trying to get an idea.
Ideas and operations.
Because in the past, early on in the school year, there were issues. So, I just want to be on top of that. That's what's causing me to ask.
I believe that's finance and operations. I think that probably would be best in that committee. Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I mean, we could speak to it at the next finance and ops, if you'd like, but most of the issues are cleared up always the first couple of weeks. There's information that comes in late, new students moving in, people moving. So, there's a number of different issues. But this year, I would say that it's been one of the more smooth years, or smoother years than we've had in the past. So, I think all in all, it's okay. There's still some parents that would like a bus, and they have in a walking zone. Yes. We hear from them, and we'll continue to hear from them. But I think all in all, it's worked out pretty well.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. That's really just what I wanted. There's no need for another bus, or any, I mean, that's the kind of stuff I'm concerned about.
Yeah, Mr. Rossio made a few changes to the bus routes and things. So, obviously, if you were involved with one of those changes, it was a little trickier the first week or so. But at this point in time, I think everything's running relatively straightforward.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
The next issue under unfinished business is discussion on grade-to-grade advancement strategies to eliminate tier-three students, grades five and eight as mastery, checkpoints before advancement to the next secondary school. That's by Mr. Kaufman, and I believe that's a curriculum and evaluation committee issue.
I would agree, Mrs. Oden.
Okay, thank you. So, that will be sent to curriculum and evaluation. The next one is the status report and update on X2 platform, and I would see that as a finance and operations issue, seeing where changing the X2 platform would be costly. Mr. Kaufman?
I put this one forward because of the changes with the recommendation or the discussion around Teacher E's, where we're talking about not using the gradebook in X2 and replacing it, at least in elementary to begin with, with the Teacher E's platform. So, quite frankly, for the last year plus, X2 has not been a discussion that has come to this board. It's been quiet. It's been stable. You don't hear anything. You think things are okay. Then all of a sudden, Teacher E's sort of comes on the map, and we're spending another $36,000, which will likely turn into $120,000 for duplicate functionality with X2. So, I want to understand that in greater detail, because this is going to be an important budget decision that we're going to have to make when we do our next budget cycle. And I'd like to be brought up to date, and I want to understand what the problems are, because they haven't come to the board in the last year. So, that's, if you want to send it to finance, that's fine. I don't have a problem. I just would like to see the topic addressed.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I do believe we need a long-term plan. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that's what Mr. Kaufman is alluding to. I agree that X2, if you've, if you've been around the district for a while, people, the teachers, students, and parents have all been complaining about X2. It's very cumbersome. It's, people aren't happy with it. And on the one hand, so something has to be done. And I am, I am pleased that something is being done where we have, do have Teacher E's. However, this is, the way things are going is that we're bringing in another software, and they don't all do this, you know, and you can't replace one with the other. So, I think we do need a long-term plan. And I agree that we do need to do something about that. And I don't know what it is, because I'm not sure. I'm not an expert on X2 or, but I do think we need to have a conversation about that. I'm certainly willing to do that in finance and operations, or whatever other committee that we, that we do. So, I think that we do need a long-term plan. And hopefully, we can eventually have just one software and one that works well for everyone, everyone satisfied with.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm very happy to hear, Mr. Guarino, you're willing to take that into the finance committee.
Okay. Discussion on measuring social, emotional learning, and that too, I believe, is curriculum and evaluation. I think we've touched on that tonight. And the next one by Mr. Kaufman is identify district-wide mechanism to forward information and comment to the strategic planning committee for consideration. And quite frankly, I think that's the strategic planning committee's issue. I think they need to develop that. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, but the board voted earlier tonight not to create an email alias and to enable that communication a little bit easier. So, I'd like the strategic committee, my request, if I want to send something to committee, who do I send it to? And I would prefer to send it to everybody at the same time. I want the whole committee to get the suggestions. I'm not interested in having them filtered, and that's what my concern is. I'll be upfront. So, I would like to see a general distribution list. The board voted not to do that, so the committee still has to figure out how they're going to receive public input. Maybe the committee will meet and decide what they want to do and get back to us. This board decided not to act, or to act not to enable public comment easily. That's what they chose to do.
Ms. Porter?
I'd like to know an example of when the strategic plan committee has filtered anything. I think that that's an unfounded statement. If I, I think that if you forwarded something to me, I would pass that on. I don't think that that would be filtered. I'm a little confused by that.
Well, I'm sorry I had to say that, but that's how I feel. Hasn't happened. But I would like to know that there's a general, just like the whole Board of Ed gets every piece of correspondence, everybody gets it at the same time. I think that should be the case for the strategic planning committee. That's my opinion. The best way to do that, I've already had a vote, and you guys declined to do that. So, right now, I'm going to ask the committee to decide how it wants to be communicated with by the general. with by the general public, and even a board member. Thank you.
Mr. Guarino, then Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say this to the public, if anybody's watching, if you want to, if you want to talk, if you want to have input on the strategic plan, just email Ms. Porter, go online, and, or email Dr. Mosley, or just email the board, and you will be heard, because it's a matter of trust, and we have two co-chairs, we have Dr. Mosley as the co-chair of the strategic planning committee, as well as Ms. Porter, and I'm sure that they, that, that they, they know what they're doing regarding taking input from the public, and, and you will be heard. So, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that.
Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. I just would like to clarify the earlier vote. I mean, I, I don't think it is the board's, I don't think it's appropriate for the board to micromanage a committee unless it becomes necessary to do so. We certainly wouldn't vote as a board to tell Ms. Van Twyver how to run her committee, and we haven't done that to my policy committee, and we haven't done it to finance committee. In, in general, we trust the chairs of our boards to react appropriately to the information that they're given, and then, you know, should there arise a problem with that, you know, then that should come to the board to assist with that. But, you know, right now, I think the board has chosen to let the strategic planning committee decide what will work for their committee and bring it back, and if, you know, there's a problem at that point, then I, I would be perfectly willing to reopen the conversation, but for now, I, I think that the chairs of that particular committee deserve the same respect that's given to the chairs of every other committee we have, so.
Ms. Hoensie.
Thank you, and, and I understand what you're saying, but all the committees have their members listed, the public has their emails, the public can contact them. If the public wanted to contact the committee, is there a list of emails? So, you know, they may feel that they want to contact the committee, I don't know. I don't see the harm, but, you know, I'm for all transparency, so to me, that it's not a big deal to, to allow the public to communicate with them, and the board has voted against it, so I accept that.
Moving on to new business, enrollment update.
As I said earlier at the first meeting, I just included in your packet an update in enrollment. There was a board member who made a request for enrollment for the Bretwood program, as long as our Clearway program, and so that's included there as well. Again, just for the public and for the board, these numbers are fluid, we'll certainly have the most solid numbers after October 1st.
Okay. I, I have a request. When we get the October 1st enrollment, the official enrollment, the sheet you gave us has the number of students at each grade level at each school. What I'd like also there is the number of classrooms at each level. Thank you.
Point of order, Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on that request? Because if you follow the logic of making, no single member should make a request to the administration without it previously being approved to the board, I ask that, that become a motion so we could vote on it.
Okay.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna impose a rule somewhere else, you have to follow it now.
Mr.
And I, and I support your idea, so don't get me wrong.
Mr. Guarino.
Yeah, I, I think that Ms. Oden is the president of the board, and we fall, you know, she's, she has been a leader, she's in a leadership role, and she is a good leader, and she can do this by consent, unless you want to have a formal vote, I, unless, I have no objection to, to her request.
Mr. Kaufman.
I, I have no objection to her request either. The fact that Mr. Mosher is on the phone forces us to have a roll call vote, so we could not just do a consensus, is, which I would have been happy to do.
I think this is taking it to another level, a stretch. I think we're all here. I don't, I didn't hear anybody say they don't see any need for that, but certainly, I, I could entertain a motion from somebody. Mr. Kaufman.
Move to request Dr. Mosley add the number of classrooms to the district enrollment report previously shared with us.
I'll second. Are you ready for the vote, Madam President?
I'm ready.
Okay, on the vote, Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
We have one no and seven yeses. Motion carries.
Okay. And next issue is snow days, school year 1819, informational.
So, you know, we have been meeting with, we had a couple of meetings with the union representation, and we are always looking to try to be as creative last year, particularly around our snow days, and so, the long and the short of it, I, we've had a couple of meetings, and, you know, there are meetings about meetings to see if there's anything that's creative around the snow days, is there anything that we can do around that? And so, I just, for the sake of discussion, and it's just best to be very clear about the next steps in this. If we, we're not going to waive any days whatsoever, it is what it is, so our tentative last day of school is June 14th, I'm looking at right now, that's our last day of school, and then we have built into those, to our schedule, a 10 additional days of, of snow days, an event that we do have snow days, so just for people's planning, just for vacations, for the, the general public out there, that I would advise that you just be cognizant that the worst-case scenario of this year would be the last day of school would be the, if with the worst-case scenario, you get 10 snow days, the last day of school would be June 28th. I, you know, I'm hoping that I never have to make that call again, I hope there's no snow days, so the last day of school would be that June 14th, but at the same time, I would caution faculty and, and the general public that we just, I'm, I'm not waiving any days, I'm not making any exceptions, there's nothing like that. We are going according to 180 days of school with no exceptions whatsoever. So, I'm just kind of putting that out there, I, I, I want people to plan accordingly, I, I would get that message out to, you know, all of the family members out there, if you have a vacation that you're spending thousands of dollars on, and you want to make sure that that's not compromised, then I would just plan accordingly to what the information I shared with you. And no one can predict Mother Nature, it's a very difficult decision to make at 3:30 in the morning with the snow mounting, this, the, the streets that need to be cleared. I think this is also a very good time to talk about snow days, just briefly. We are a city, which means that the only city that reflects our needs is probably Manchester, maybe a little bit of Concord, so when we look at snow days, it's in addition to sidewalks, because we do have schools that, that we have walkers, so all of that is in consideration when we look at snow. We also take into consideration weather, no, temperature, excuse me. So, anytime that it is, you know, negative, you know, below negative five or anything like that, then that's another factor in terms of making some adjustments to our school day according to temperature and weather. What I will do, and I've done this once, and I actually think the district did a really good job with this, is that if I can anticipate when the snow falls, or perhaps do an early release, I will certainly entertain that, and that would be helpful so that we can get the days in. If I announce an early release, given the size of our district, and I'm very sensitive to parents in terms of their working schedules, I like to do that the day before. Doing that the day before just allows parents that extra time to arrange for childcare, and also for their working, their, their job responsibilities, or their working responsibilities as well. So, I just, I'm not, you know, I hope this is a moot point in terms of our snow days, but certainly, I'm not going to be waiving any other days, any snow days, or any days this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. The next issue under new business, student resource officer at the Nashville School District, there's a memorandum of understanding, and I think we all have that, and have read that.
This was a memorandum of understanding that was sent to me by the Nashville Police Department, it's pretty standard. I didn't want to sign it or sign off on it, just until I made the board aware of it. There are, you know, it's just an agreement between, you know, one entity, the school, the school and police, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and if you had any questions.
Mr. Kaufman.
Move to approve the MOU provided by the police for the duration of the agreement, which doesn't really have, it says three years, but for the duration of the agreement.
Second.
Are you ready for the vote, Madam President?
Ms. Hoensie has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Not ready for the vote, okay?
I just have a question. It says that in the memorandum, the, the SRO is supposed to communicate the disposition of cases involving felony charges for students as permitted within the requirements of confidentiality. I imagine he reports them to the police department. Are those also reported to the board? It wouldn't be in this document, but I just want to make sure that, so we have an idea, without names or anything, but to understand what's going on in our district, would that also be reported to the board?
Whatever legally we can report to the board without violating it, teachers or, I'm sorry, student confidentiality, we can certainly do that. We've had a very good relationship with the police. Anytime there's been any situation, whether it's a, a student that is involved with the courts, or students that have some charges pending, they have been very upfront with us. I think there's a difference between being charged and being convicted, which is two different things. I'm certainly not a lawyer here, but certainly, they've been very good with communicating that, there has not been an issue. In terms of bringing it to the board, that's a new procedure, is that something that if you'd like to, to make, I, if that's something you want to make a contingent upon the memorandum of understanding, then that's in the board's purview to do so, and then I have to take it back and have legal look at it. So, that's, that's new to me. I, I don't see, unless there was an issue around discipline that would rise to the board's level, I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Well, I'm not trying to find out what the students are doing in their spare time, but if there's problems within the schools that lead to felony charges, I would think the board would want to know. I mean, if there's none, we could celebrate, if there's some, you know, that's all, just to get a handle on what's going on, you're in a better position to know what's going on. I, I would appreciate similar information redacted, just so we know what's going on.
Thanks. I just would like to remind my colleague that all expulsions come to the board anyway. We, so if there was an expulsion, and it was due to a firearm, we would know, because we would be the, sort of the court of last resort, so you may have forgotten that, I don't know. But the concern is, but I also appreciate Ms. Hoensie's concern, but we, if it is an expulsion, it is firearm-related, we'll know about it, because it'll come to us.
Perhaps all felony charges would lead to an expulsion, and then we'd know, but I would think there might be some that don't. I don't, again, I just, I want to make sure that the board, the whole board is in the loop, to some extent, which is ever allowable in terms of privacy.
Ms. Raymond.
I'm trying to recall from my experience with juvenile probation and parole, who is entitled to information regarding students and, you know, children who have felony charges. I think we have to be very careful here. I can see situations where a student might be charged with a felony outside of school, but the school resource officer might still be involved in the investigating and then later prosecution of that event, because they are also police officers, and sometimes it's helpful to have one that's, you know, working with youth. My proposal is that we approve it as is, but we could ask Attorney Bolden or Tom Clausen to look into what the board would be allowed to have for information versus what we are not, and give us an update.
Okay, that would be great.
Is that acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
So, are we approving this and then asking for some more information, is that correct? Under what umbrella? On how much, how much information we can share about kids and felony charges, or?
I, I would say, my thought is that we approve this memorandum of understanding as is, but for our own personal knowledge, as we are learning and growing as board members, if, if one of the attorneys could simply let us know informationally, you know, what are the restrictions on privacy for students with, you know, felony charges? Does that, and I don't necessarily need him to come say it at a board meeting, even if he just sends an email and says, you know, under the law, these are the people who are allowed to know, and you're not one of them, or yes, you can know if one happened, but you can't know the student's name, or whatever, I don't know what the answer is.
Mr. Kaufman.
Just as a point of order, and I agree with what Ms. Raymond is trying to accomplish, but if we're going to be making a request from a single member to someone else to do something for us, should that not be a vote of the whole board? This is what the board has decided, so I'm asking it to meet its own, its own protocols.
Right, I hear what you're saying, and this.
And I'm happy to accept a motion, and, and I'll second your motion to enable it, I'm not trying to stop it, I'm just trying to, if the board is going to require a vote for every referral to the superintendent, we still need to do the same thing if we're going to ask the attorney. The board should be always in agreement if we're going to make the request outside this body.
Ms. Raymond.
So, I hear what you're saying, and I would remind us all that we think about the definition of a request for information versus a directive to do something. At this point, I'm simply asking for information, so, you know, I, I don't care one way or the other, I was simply trying to move it along, because I think this is an extremely important memorandum of understanding, and our kids could potentially be at risk if we don't approve it. So, I think we ought to move along with all haste, so that we don't have a single day where we don't have an agreement with the police who have done so much for us.
Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the concern from the last, second to last speaker, but when we sit here as a body and we make requests, it's pretty much we're doing this by consent. When you have another member that has a list of items and, and that, that require a lot of work, it's a different story. So, that's, that's the point that I made earlier in this meeting, okay? You know, we can work together and have, these are, these are just simple requests or questions versus go get me, compile me a whole bunch of information, go do a survey, you know? So, so we have to, we have to just be reasonable and think about what we do, and we're doing it by consent, because everyone's here, if someone has a problem with it, they can object to it.
Thank you. Okay.
Point of order, Ms.?
Uh, Ms., Mr. Kaufman.
Without a, without a vote, the board has not made a decision, I just want to point that out.
Unless you object to it, it has. We, we can consent to just have some information and have a simple question. If you object to it, then you want to vote, then we'll vote.
I asked for a vote, yes, and I'd be happy to second if Ms. Raymond were to make a motion.
Uh, Ms. Timmons.
Yes, we're getting lost in the weeds, so I'm trying to figure out, are we voting on this or not? I think we should vote on this and move forward, because the smoke screening is out, we, I, I believe there was a motion on the floor in second, and we need to pass this memorandum of understanding and move on.
Point of vo, point of vote, Ms. Timmons is correct, we can only have one motion on the floor at a time, and we can't have two motions on the floor at a time. So, the motion that we have on the floor is to approve the, the student resource officer Nashville School District memorandum of understanding for the duration of the agreement. That's the motion we have on the floor, and that's what we're, we should be voting on. We can only have one motion on the floor at a time.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Are we ready for the vote?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms., Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, it is now five minutes of nine. I am going to ask, we have public school infrastructure, we have three more things left on the agenda under New Business, and I will ask if, what the prerogative of the board is, is if we should extend for another 30 minutes at nine o'clock to nine thirty, or whether we would adjourn. Ms. Raymond?
I would propose continuing, simply because we have this payment for some infrastructure, and I feel like that is probably a timely thing, that people would appreciate us taking care of and not waiting two more weeks on.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move that we continue for 30 more minutes.
Okay, I second. On, on the motion to continue for 30 minutes, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, okay.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, the next item is Public School Infrastructure Project Completion and Request for Payment Form. Mr. Donovan.
Yes, in your package, you saw the, the payment form, the request for payment form. This is related to the, most of the safety funding that we got for a number of our, we got a number of grants for safety projects in our school. I believe we have 12 different grants, which was great news, and we, we've begun to finish up a lot of these projects. The one tricky part about getting paid is item five on the instructions. Section B requires you attach a notarized affidavit from the superintendent, the business administrator, and underlined, "all school members." So basically, every time we finish a project, we need to fill out the form and we need everybody to sign it, but since it needs to be notarized, and if you're a good notary, the notary has to be there while you're signing it. So a suggestion is Tara Kinsella has agreed to come to the board meetings 15 minutes prior to the start, so let's say every other week at quarter of seven, she'll be here and you can sign these forms. She'll have them with you, but basically each person needs to sign it. So that's what I'm suggesting. The other option is you can come in to the office and see Tara and sign it there, but since it's all board members, I don't know, it might make sense to do this every, every time we have one right before the meeting starts. It's, other than that, it's pretty simple. You know, these are, these are relatively small amounts of money in the scheme of things. We basically will give a copy of the invoices, we'll take pictures of the work that was done, we'll submit it with this form, and then we'll hopefully get payment within 30 days.
Ms. Porter?
So if we do that before every board meeting, does that give you time to pay the bills on time?
Yeah, paying the bills won't be a problem.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, good.
Mr. Kaufman.
Excuse me, is it paying the bills or getting reimbursement?
Getting reimbursed from the state.
That's right, so even more important that we do it in a timely manner.
Ms. Hohensie.
Is this a new procedure or?
Yes, this is a new fund and a new, this is the first time this.
This procedure's been used. Okay, and we'll get that in our packet, so we'll have time to review it before the board meeting where we get signed and notarized?
If you'd like to see each one, sure.
Well, I remember one time there was a document we were all told to sign, we didn't get to read, and it was like rushed through, and I'd appreciate being able to read documents that I'm expected to sign.
If you need to see them, like I said, it can be put in the package.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
So the plan will be to do that?
Yes.
Okay, and just, if I can just sneak in one other thing, I think Ms. Hohensie was talking about the state reports. The state reports, some of them the board needs to sign, some they don't, okay? So the state reporting is, has a lot of information, and so what I'm going to do this year, I'll send it to you, and if you want to review all this data, good luck to you, but I will be bringing next board meeting, the budget sheets, and like I said, I'll send them to you in advance. If you have any questions, please let me know beforehand. Coming to the meeting with questions doesn't really help me unless I know it off the top of my head. So, but I'll be bringing that. The first set of signatures will be in two weeks, and then when we complete the year-end report, the more significant, the DOE 25, that's the other one that'll need to be signed. But we don't, we don't have that completed yet, so I'm just giving a heads up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the next, oh, I'm sorry, just somebody, Ms., Ms. Raymond?
Oh, thank you, I don't want to take a lot of time. Just for those of us who are squeaking into the meetings because of children's activities and babysitters and all that fun stuff, can I still stop by the office?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, and.
I can do it the day of the meeting usually, just, I'm a squeaker.
Yeah, well, I'm sure Tara will stay around a few minutes if you want to.
All right, I just don't want to, you know, unduly impose on her after she's been working for 12 hours already.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next issue, non-affiliated staff handbook annual salary increases.
Okay, so it's really not the handbook, that's sort of a, it's just the salary increases. In your packet, now that the directors have created their own union and taken 53 people away from the non-affiliates, we have a relatively small group of non-affiliated people. So in there is a sheet, it's broken into two pieces. The first is the fiscal year staff, these are the people that work mostly full year, start in, in July and work through the fiscal year. And the second group is the school year staff, and those are people that obviously work a school year. If you look on the back of the page, you can see the suggested dollar increase, which is $29,622. The budget for this group was $35,804, and the percent increase for everyone except one person is suggested to be 2%.
Who's the one that's not?
Tara Kinsella.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, I move that we approve the annual salary increases for the non-affiliated employees.
Second. Okay. For roll call?
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, Mr. Donovan, you're up again, the Hampshire DOE General Assurance.
Okay, I was asked to sort of bring some clarity and, to a, a point that was made at the beginning of the last meeting, I believe. So just want to put some information forward to the group so that everyone understands. There is these general assurances. These assurances, which cover things like, that you have financial controls, that you have systems in place, that you'll follow the rules of grants and things like that, there's a whole number, if you look through the 13 page, that you have a drug-free workplace policy. There's lots and lots of, lots of requests that you're required to have in place if you're going to receive money from the federal government. So that's what these assurances are. Now, these assurances have been signed by the superintendents for the last number of years. The difference this year is that in May, a, a, there's a certification page, and on that certification page, it was added for the first time this year, the statement that a required signature line for the BO, that it required a signature line for the BOE chair after consulting with the full BOE. So that was never on this before. So when the BOE chair was asked to sign it, she signed it. Had she signed it last year, it wouldn't have had that statement in it. So not to say that the full board shouldn't have been notified, but it was something new. So it wasn't like, in my sense, even though I wasn't involved with the signatures, I don't think anyone was trying to hide anything, I just, something new, a new sentence was added to this certification page. And the certification page is required by the state, the state added that. It really, there's no requirement by the federal government that this be done. This is a state issue. These are mostly federal funds, but the state, the state manages the funds for the federal government. So they added this on top of it, on top of the assurance document this year. And the second statement, that there was some sort of risk of us losing millions of dollars, that just really wasn't the case. We did check with the state, they told us, we checked with two different people, that if we had not signed this document and sent it up, we may have not received our reimbursements until the document was signed. But there's really no truth at all to the fact that we would have lost any of the money. The money would have been delayed until we had sent the document up to them. We sent the document after the deadline, but it was only 25 days after the deadline, and it didn't affect any of the transfer of money and the requests, since we only do those on a monthly basis anyway. So, and I guess the other thing, since we're a significant district in size and the amount of, the amount of grants we receive, there's a thing called the single audit. We are audited by an accounting firm every year on our grants. Any grant over $750,000 is audited in detail. We get a report each year. I share that with the finance and ops each spring when we get the report.
Yep.
So that should give the, the board even more confidence because we're audited. It's not fun for the accounting or financial group, but it gives you, since we have significant dollars associated with it, we do get audited, there really aren't any issues. If there are, they're noted in the audit. Like I said, I share that with the finance and ops every spring. So I think all in all, we're, we're in good shape when it comes to our, our federal grants and the payments of those.
Okay, thank you, and I will note, everybody has received that 14-page document, and if anybody reads that, should we have a policy that might differ from what the state is looking for? The state law supersedes our policy, and that's, that's the way it is. So if there is a, if we have a policy that does not agree with the state law, the state law does supersede our policy, so. Okay, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. In the certification signed by Dr. Mosley, one of the things it says is that I further certify that I have informed all board members of the school board of the federal funds the district will be receiving and of these general assurances. So what exactly, I mean, the DOE 25 is going to detail that on a program-level basis. There's just over $13 million, but you haven't done that yet. So the certification, I would argue, is incomplete until you fulfill what the certification requires. So I don't know when you can do that.
Ms. Raymond?
Ms. Raymond?
I was just going to say, it's in our budget.
No, it's, it's not in the operating budget, we don't see it.
No, but it's in our budget book. Ms. Raymond?
Yes, it's in the budget book. Correct, Mr. Donovan?
Typically it is.
Yeah.
But as my memory serves me correct, two years ago, it was definitely in the budget book, we, the significant grants, okay? And we had a, this past year, it never got in there because of the way the budget went. I do have them in my budget book, the significant grants, and it, and it lists what the grants are doing and what the, but I'm not sure it was given out this year.
Okay, then I'd like to move that we get that so that we can have a complete budget book.
It's fine.
In the index, Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Garino.
I'll second for the point of discussion, but I would like to perhaps make an amendment if I'm, well, yeah, we need to see it before the certification is filed with the state. So I move to amend the motion that this information be given to us prior to the certification being sent to the state, so we are sure we are compliant.
I, I.
Mr. Garino?
I think, I think the certification's already been sent, so I don't know how that amendment can work. I, I also want to say, before Dr. Mosley, that this basically is an application for federal dollars. If you look on the back, it says, "I hereby apply for participation in federal dollars," something done every year. And I also want to say that as far as federal dollars, we've been, we are being advised on a lot of these assurances on an ongoing basis, Mr. Donovan and the finance, in different committees, as well as Dr. McKinney. I've, I've heard them talk about federal dollars, what is Title I, what is not Title I, that's basically what it's looking, what, what they're looking for to make sure that the board is informed regarding these federal, federal programs. We are informed on an ongoing basis, what is in our operating budget, what is Title I or federal dollars. So, and I, and I do believe that there's a further certification down the, in March of 2019. I guess there's a, at, at the end of, when you get the federal dollars, there's, there's another certification that's going to be done, a matrix or something like that, that we have to report on. So I, I think you can't make that amendment because we've already, we've already done the certification.
Well.
Mr. Donovan?
Didn't mean to confuse the issue.
No, that's, no, this, this has been sent in, and we are receiving funds, so I don't think we want to stop receiving the funds.
No.
We can ask to have it rescinded, but we don't get the funds, if that's what you're saying?
Yes.
I'm saying, Mrs. Oden?
Mr. Kaufman?
I'm suggesting that the board make a motion to formally accept this, as suggested, and that we send an updated form now that the actual delivery of the information has been completed. This certification says the information was shared prior to the date it was signed. We sent the document to the state and by de facto to the federal government that was sent incorrectly. We misrepresented what happened at the district level. So what my motion attend, attempts to do is just make it right and fulfill the requirements that the certification demands. So either do it right, or, do I think they're going to stop the funds? No. Do I think that there could be, you know, there's a clause in here where they talk about monitoring, and then there's a second, this is page 11, and then the next paragraph is more restrictive conditions. Do I think the state could recommend that we move from a monitoring state to a more restrictive condition that's a high risk? I think that's possible because we sent in a document incorrectly. So I'm trying to set it up so we make amends in a way by reissuing it now that we have fulfilled, and the purpose of the motion is to be very clear to the state that the board has in fact received the information per their requirement.
Point of order, we already have a motion on the floor, we have Ms. Raymond's motion on the floor, so we can only have one motion on the floor at a time.
Point of order, you can amend the motion.
Which I attempted to. I did, actually.
Well, then you said you made, then you went on to make a different. Well, then you said you made, then you went on to make a different motion. So this, you made an amendment not, not to send this, to delay it, and then you started to make another motion, which was very long and convoluted.
So let's vote on the motion that's on the floor. I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons, you haven't spoken.
Yes, again, getting lost in the weeds. I'm sorry about that. But I think that we're going off the deep end. I think this is unnecessary. I think that what is done is done, and we need to move on, and we need to vote on the fact that we have this, what is it, the contract or whatever you want to call it? And we need to vote on that and keep moving on. It's done. To add anything else to it, to give books, it's already on Mr. Donovan's books. I'm good with that. We can look at his books. I don't think you would deny that, would you? Okay, there you are. We're just getting lost in the weeds. It'll be 9:30, and we will have to, again, extend the meeting for something that just that's not necessary.
Ms. Hohency?
Thank you. The commissioner put this in place as a speed bump, because he knows that many districts, the school boards aren't fully informed when they should be, because they are the overseers of the district, and they don't always get the information. Our budget book didn't have it this year. I'm not pointing a finger and saying blame. Other years, we asked and asked, and we got it in. So this is a speed bump to make sure board members are fully informed. I don't see what the harm is, is giving a true, as opposed to a false certification to the state.
It was not a false certification.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, just, please.
I think that's interrupting.
Ms. Hohency has the floor.
Been happening all night.
Please.
Is Ms. Timmons done?
Are you?
Ms. Timmons is rude.
Excuse me.
Move to adjourn, Mr. President.
Move to adjourn. I'm done. I'm done playing this game.
Excuse me. I would, I would ask that we check with legal counsel as to what would be appropriate here. Okay?
And that should include, that should include the funds that will be distributed, which we haven't received yet.
So, point of order, I'm sorry.
We're not recognized. Ms. Raymond?
Point of order, we have one motion to request the paperwork. We have another motion to adjourn, and I believe we have to vote on the motion to adjourn first and leave mine hanging. And then, if we don't adjourn, move on to voting on whether or not we need the paperwork, and then move on to public comments and finishing up our meeting.
And a non-public that I requested in the beginning.
And a non-public, unless we all decide to adjourn, in which case I'll see you guys in two weeks. But as we have people sitting here, I feel like we should move forward.
So could you please read the motion?
Point of order, we have a motion on the floor, which is that Mr. Donovan --
To adjourn supersedes any motion.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm talking, please.
Mr. Kaufman, we have had a decent meeting so far, please.
We have, we have a motion that Mr. Donovan provide us with the federal funding information that is provided before in our budget book. Mr. Kaufman made a motion to adjourn. It was not seconded.
It was seconded.
And it's not debatable.
Excuse me. All right. I did not hear a second before, okay? I'm just telling you, as a clerk, the procedure, you make a motion, it gets seconded. I did not hear a second.
I did.
Okay. All right, seconded by, all right, now we can vote on the motion to adjourn, okay? On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
We have one, two, three, four, five no's and three yeses. The motion fails. Are we ready to vote on the motion? Ms. Raymond's motion, that Mr. Donovan provide us with the federal funding information that normally is in our budget book? On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Just, Mr. Kaufman?
I had made an amendment to that motion.
The amendment is, what's your amendment? Is that we hold off until, we hold off --
Are you asking me, or are you talking?
I'm telling you, okay?
One at a time, please.
Okay. Your, your amendment was to hold off on the certification until we get that information. It's too late. We already, we already sent it in and certified. So I don't know how, your motion defies logic, your amendment. So I don't know how that can be.
This is an editorial, point of order?
It's, it's a fact.
Yes, yes, please, let's vote.
We have to vote on the amendment first.
You want to, Madam President, you want to vote on the amendment not to certify when it was already done?
That's why we're lost in the weeds.
Point of information or privilege, I'm not really sure which one. Mr. Kaufman, would you mind repeating your amendment so that I am clear on what I'm voting on?
Thank, well, I'm asking that we delay sending this in, pending getting the information that's in here that says that all board members have been informed, excuse me, it's the top section, Dr. Mosley, where he's going to certify. And I'm suggesting he certifies it again, that the board, my amendment is that the board waits to send this form in until it has received the information identified of the federal funds the district will be receiving.
Thank you for the clarity. I'd like to call the question.
Excuse me, call the questions, non-debatable.
On the amendment, Mr. Mosher?
I say no.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six no's, two yeses. Now, can we vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mosher, this is, this motion is to, that Ms. Raymond made, that we get the federal funding information that is normally in our budget book. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Now go to public comments. Is there anybody, the three of you, who would like to speak? No? Okay. Board member comments? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Let's see. Two weeks ago, at the conclusion of our public meeting, as we went into a non-public session, an unfortunate set of events took place. For those unaware, the police were called and the panic alarm was triggered. This has resulted in a police investigation, in which I am told 15 people have been interviewed. The results of the police report should be available by the end of this week. How do I know this information? The police came to my house Saturday night at 9:00 PM, only 11 days after I contacted them on Tuesday the 11th. Mrs. Oden, your comments in the newspaper were not based on your personal knowledge, as you were not in the room when the situation took place. You made your comments without speaking to me or other board members that were in the room. You only got one side of the story, and then you commented publicly. Shame on you. Your uninformed comments have hurt the district and me personally. The person causing the situation, likely your source of information, remains unstated but is not unknown. I am therefore requesting an apology from you. When the police officer came to my house Saturday night at 9:00 PM, there were actually two police cars dispatched. I asked the officer, he had seen the video taken by a member of the Administrator Union who was standing on the top step as they had used their cellphone to record what happened. I must say that if that administrator receives a cellphone stipend from the district, the district has a right to inspect its contents. I ask that that be done for the four female members of the Administrators Union who attended the event, as I do not know who actually recorded it. I also asked the officer if he was interested in understanding why there is so much discord on the board. He said yes. I suggested to him that he review the emails that have been sent to and from board members dating back to December, even before the new members were sworn in. Why? Because in my opinion, if you really want to understand our board's dysfunction, the roots of the problem are in the emails. I told him he could ask Dr. Mosley for a copy, as they are public record, and as part of police investigation, he would likely not have to file a right-to-know request. I told him that I would support board action to make the video public. I also told him that I would support waiving our rules to allow a police officer to attend non-public sessions. Before I complete my remarks, I would like to read an email I received from Ms. Timmons on Monday morning, September 10th, the day of our previous board meeting. First, let me explain the situation. An employee sent an email to the board asking us to save the date for the North High School NIASC accreditation. The individual sending the email did not use the BOE email alias, but instead used individual names. I politely wrote back and advised them that they left someone off the list, and they should use the BOE distribution list in the future. The board member who was inadvertently left off the list thanked me for correcting the error. Ms. Timmons replied and sent the following email to me, you, Mrs. Oden, and the person who sent the email, the original email, Howard. "You should stay in your lane. You are not the president." This, this is a quote. "You should stay in your lane. You are not the president. This is not your concern. This is Mrs. Oden. As usual, you are out of control. Please do not address the entire board, as I do not appreciate nor accept any correspondence from you." Then she uses the name of the person who sent the original email. "Do not deserve a scathing remark from you or anyone else on this board," end of quote. "Please know that I did not respond to this or numerous similar emails, but this type of communication has been going on since before Ms. Timmons was sworn into office. There are a lot of emails, just as bullying and harassing like this, that have been sent by Mrs. Timmons and Mr. Garino. I encourage the police, the public, the newspapers, the blogosphere, to find out what's really going on within the Board of Education. In my opinion, reviewing the email record would help the public understand our dysfunction. The devil is in the details, and the details are the BOE emails. The public should know that 99% of the emails are already public documents. The problem is that the board does not make them accessible as part of the public record of board business. They voted against it tonight. I really don't know why, if we're here for transparency. I have been trying since April to include the text of the emails as part of the public record. Mrs. Oden, under your chairmanship, this board hasn't considered or discussed this request in over five months. Tonight, we did. The public has a right to know. I repeated this request as a new business agenda item. I had expected to say this earlier in the evening for our last meeting. We never got to it, so it's on this week's agenda, our whole business for tonight. Thank you.
I did give you extra time, Mr. Kaufman. It was over five minutes, but I will respond to you. I made it very clear to the reporter that I was not in the room, but I had, I heard from two individuals that were in the room and saw firsthand what happened, and so I have no apology to make.
Did you speak to me before you made your public statement?
No, I did not.
That's enough. Thank you. That's all I need to know.
And you know that I didn't?
I know that.
You know that I didn't, and I'm very, very willing to admit that.
It's fine. Just want, just want it out there. Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Raymond? I'm sorry, Ms. Raymond?
Oh, we're not going around the room?
No. I didn't see your hand up when I was talking to him. Your hand wasn't up once, Ms. Raymond, but I'll come back to you.
Fine.
Could you please leave it at least, minimum, three minutes?
I will be very brief. I just, I'm not going to comment on what happened last week. I believe many people got visits from the police, as did I, with my kids, and I shared my information with them, and I'm certain that they are doing a fair and impartial investigation. Having said that, I simply want to state for the record that I am personally not in favor of any action that would violate the First Amendment rights of any individual who might have used a cellphone while in this room. And I think any suggestion of examining cellphones would be a violation of that, and so there's absolutely no way that I could ever get behind that. So that's all I have to say.
Ms. Hohency?
Thank you. I believe there's a board policy that says if you take a stipend for your cellphone, that the district has a right to examine it. I know a staff member who left and had her cellphone taken out of her hand, and she was asked, "Have you been contacting board members?" And she had no stipend. So don't go there. I came back in after that event. Ms. Timmons was attacking myself, Mr. Kaufman, and Ms. Van Twyver. I couldn't make sense of what she was attacking me about. She said I didn't belong on the board. There was no rational discussion possible, so I let it drop. There was some talk about a racial slur that she evicted on Mr. Kaufman about his anatomy. This is, this is instigated over and over and over again, and it needs to stop. An editorial on one side of it doesn't make it all go away.
Okay. Can I turn next? Ms. Timmons?
I'm not going to dignify myself with any of that nonsense they're speaking. So I'm going to pass, because the police report will speak for itself, and that's that.
Mr. Garino?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a lot of political theater, and I want to apologize to the public, to the, to the parents, to the taxpayers, to the students who deserve better. The people in the city of Nashua deserve better. They do not deserve political theater. That's what this is. It's political theater. And we need to keep our, we need to keep focused, this board needs to keep focused on, on the business of educating our children. And we, and some people say that this board is dysfunctional. They're wrong. It functions, okay? Despite the infighting, we, we do function, and I'm making that promise to the people in the city of Nashua, this board will function. And I think there's enough people on this board who are going to make it function. And I do have a little written thing, and I'm going to be brief, and I don't want to continue any more political theater, but I just want to talk about a specific remark that I have heard one board, one board member make on more than one occasion. This board member remarked that the people in our school district are somehow not operating in the real world. And I just want to say that our society places on the doorsteps of our teachers some very serious, real-world problems. Some of our students come to school from families that are in crisis, and we have, we have some families, not all families, but some families. We have very capable and caring teachers and counselors who work hard every day to get our students through hard times, whatever problem or whatever problem our students might have, large or small. I know, because I have a student in the system. Our staff in our public school district deals every day with all kinds of real-world problems, whether it's food service, feeding hundreds of hungry kids, or, I know a little bit about that, like I said, I have teenagers at home. Our plant managers have to make sure some of our very old buildings are properly heated using antiquated infrastructure. These are real-world problems. Just like sitting around our kitchen table, we manage our bills. Our COO, Mr. Donovan, has to pay our bills, find money for emergency purposes. And I'm sure there's a lot of things that our staff does every day that I left out. So I want to commend Dr. Mosley, the administration, our principals, for instituting the see something, say something effort. We live in a very crowded city. No child should feel lonely or disconnected from his peers or from society as a whole. We owe it to all the kids in our district to reach out to anyone who might need help. And I visited my daughter's teachers during open house at Nashua High South, and there are many opportunities for students to get involved. So I just want to speak to parents and urge them to talk to their children, find out what they might like, and get them involved. Take advantage of the great opportunities that our public schools in Nashua has to offer. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. It is now 9:35. We're five minutes over our time limit. If we want to extend it for Mr. Kaufman's non-public, we will have to extend our meeting longer.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight to zero.
Motion, 9:35.
9:35.